Where's your picture?
It's on the wall outside.
Yours is down below with the mayors.
Oh.
This is just the council and then his is with all the mayors.
Oh, okay.
Some crazy fan. That's Mike Wacker stopping to, you know, not hand him some, but uh...
Don't make it.
Some crazy fan.
So we'll be on YouTube.
We almost drew some mustaches on all of them, but we thought we were enough.
There are those markers up here.
They're closed.
I wonder if anybody even lifts their clothes.
They have them in Weaver saying that. Always look down.
Okay, so when you're indexing those records, do you understand those first?
Yeah.
It really is annoying.
Magnifying.
Well, it's like a heater, I got this.
I mean, if you know, if you... How's your uh, curse it right?
It's chilly here.
Exactly.
No, it's chilly, chilly kind of guy.
More sour cloud?
Although, you know, I've been, I've been chilly since I got here. And my goal was to maybe just like you're so. And I was successful.
Now he's a great one.
Things are good. Uh, Sidone is currently on meds. She's getting shots every two days.
Can you get more shots?
Yeah. Okay, how are you?
My dog has...
I get my doctor shots too, over five minutes.
Yeah, well, I've been working on my yard actually, like, and I still have to... Yeah, I can maybe get off the speed on some things. They're paid more stuff.
Yeah.
It's been like...
It's not good, I realize.
He has to still be working.
Get my crown level. Do you, do you do something up front?
Yeah.
It's freezing out for uh...
I should have my coat switched. I should stick that in my back. That's a good sweater.
Oh, yeah. I wear a lot of sleep.
Yeah, it's uh...
It's cold in here.
It's so cold.
It'll keep us awake. No, it's cold.
Yeah, are we being seen now? Yeah. I'm not paying the blowers. You guys want to fix the heater this year?
I will. I will never complain. I'm too cold.
Just can't wait. Just can't wait. My office is called the Arctic Tunnel.
Get a sweater next time.
Oh.
I'm cold today too.
I got a question to ask you. You being on the council longer than I have.
See, I like today, I was outside the yard. I, I heard this, I, I sweat a little.
South Ogden shirts. Can you get more South Ogden shirts or how do you do it?
Times.
Oh. Who would tell us? Matt? Oh, okay. I uh...
Sort of.
I got one in uh, my closet. Says South Ogden Days. I'm sure it's probably the same deal.
So my hands are trashed. Okay, Lise, you ready? Uh, good evening, everybody. Welcome to our South Ogden City Council meeting for Tuesday, June 3rd, 2025. Appreciate everybody being here. We are on YouTube tonight. Uh, so they don't have a chance to comment, but they, well, I guess they can comment. We won't see it till later. But uh, welcome to our YouTube crew. Uh, entertain a motion that we begin.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
We'll start with a moment of silence. Please join us in that, after which Councilmember Howe will give us the pledge of allegiance. Thank you.
Please rise if able.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Uh, thank you. It's time for public comment. If they'd like to come address mayor and council staff, you're welcome to come to the microphone. Okay, seeing none, let's move on to our consent agenda. A few items here. Approval of the May 20th, 2025 council minutes. And we're also gonna set a public hearing. Two weeks from tonight, our June 17th meeting. To receive and consider comments on the following. Amendments to the fiscal year 2025 budget. Cities intend to continue not charging itself for water, sewer, and storm drain used for normal city operations during the fiscal year 2026. Proposed utility franchise fee transfers to enterprise funds to the general fund. And proposed compensation increases for executive municipal officers. Any discussion changes on the consent agenda? Entertained a motion that we approve the consent agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Awesome. All right, a few discussion action items. First one, consideration of resolution 25-13 approving agreement with Dragon Dynamite displays for South Ogden Days fireworks. Danielle, please.
Yes, thank you. So you can see there's a couple of agreements, um, due to some tariff issues. Uh, we have to add a little pricing to our fireworks display this year to keep it the same as last year. And in looking at the agreement, we were gonna have the extension made for the $900. We realized that the original agreement for the three-year contract had never been executed. So in this resolution is signing the original three-year agreement at the $10,000 plus the $900 for this year. Just so we're all copasthetic.
Okay. Any questions? Councilmember Howe.
What was the date of that original agreement?
11/23 was when it was originally done, November of 2023.
So was this a one-year extension then, or one-year?
It was.
Agreement in one year, or we're starting three years from now?
So the agreement covers 2024, 2025, and 2026. And so we did 2024, realizing the agreement hadn't been signed. So 2025 will have the extra $900 for the tariff fees. And as of now, 2026 will maintain the $10,000 rate unless something happens again. So the three-year agreement will cover the original $10,000 and then $900 for this year.
So going forward, would we sign another three-year contract, or how is that done?
Um, I believe this was a request for proposals, and that's where we came up with this one. So I think we would do that in, after 2026 is put that call out again for another three-year agreement.
Mayor, please. I, I don't know if I recall reading this. The um, is there something in the contract that says if the tariffs? Are we paying 10, 9 every year for the next three years, or is it just 10, 9 this year? Because of the increase due to tariffs?
Cause we already paid the 10 last year. Like, last year is done, so that's the first year of the contract. So this year we would just do the 9.
And then next year...
It's 10 unless something changes. Yep. The $900 is only for this year.
Correct.
Okay, entertain a motion that we approve resolution 25-13.
So moved.
Second.
Motion second. Any further discussion? Roll call vote, Councilmember Stewart?
Yes.
Councilmember Howard?
Yes.
Councilmember Smythe?
Yes.
Councilmember Stevens?
Yes.
Councilmember Howe?
Yes.
As mayor?
Yes.
When I got home, I had delivered in our mailbox the Home Value uh, magazine. And right on the front cover, it had South Ogden Days, June 20th and 21st. So uh, now it uh, has done a great job in presenting that aspect there, and so. The word is out there, and I hope everyone enjoys themselves for that.
Well, let's just say, without fireworks, uh, we get more complaints than anything else, probably the city does. All right, item B, consideration of resolution 25-14 approving an interlocal agreement with Weber County for the provision of technical forensic services. Chief Park. CSI.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, just housekeeping on this. Uh, the staff report I had written for this was inadvertently not included in the packet. Um, I emailed that too. I emailed that to you late today. Um, we couldn't go back and change the packet, obviously, because the timeframe for public notice has expired, so. Um, but the interlo- local agreement itself was in the packet, and really, the staff report is just a summary of what that agreement specifies. So I'll just go over what the agreement is. Um, this is for CSI, our crime scene investigation unit, uh, to continue our agreement with them. This is a county-wide program. It's been in place for over 25 years. It was created out of need for specialty skills based on DNA development and crime scene processing. This is a highly specialized area. Um, the folks that conduct this for us are, actually have degrees in this area. The funding for this is based on two portions. One is population and the other is the number of times you call them. We call CSI out on about every three days on something, ranging from a gunshot wound to a vehicle burglary, assaults, you name it. Uh, they process the scenes, they collect evidence, they take it back to their facility. They do lab analysis up to the point where they're equipped to do so. Sometimes it has to go to the state. This has proven to be a very vital program for police departments across the county. Um, and this is not a bill. This is just saying, yes, we continue, we plan on continuing with that. At the same time, our projected expense for FY25 is $49,797. Um, so my recommendation would be that the council approve this uh, interlocal agreement for technical services through Weber County.
Any questions for Chief on CSI? Is this right in the budget? Is this a budget item every year?
Yeah, yeah, it's in there every year.
Okay, figured. Okay. Okay, seeing no comments, entertain a motion then that we approved resolution 25-14.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Uh, roll call vote, Councilmember Howe?
Yes.
Councilmember Stevens?
Yes.
Councilmember Smythe?
Yes.
Councilmember Howard?
Yes.
Councilmember Stewart?
Yes.
Thank you. Item C, uh, so did you, did you have public, will you put on public comment? And you weren't here. Okay, awesome. Uh, item C, consideration of resolution 25-15 approving agreement with Asphalt Construction and Excavation Company for 2025 street maintenance. Mr. Anderson.
Thank you, Mayor, Council. Um, before you tonight, you have a contract for the 2025 um, street maintenance project, which is a overlay, uh, edge mill and overlay. Um, it's kind of explained in the work session a little bit before. You have asphalt construction, um, getting the bid. If you look at the point system, the way we graded it, Staker Parsons, just due to the size of the company and their massive size and what they do, scored a little bit higher. But um, we wanted to award it to Asphalt Construction and Excavating and, and give these guys a chance, you know, maybe be able to use them in the future on some different projects. Um, and like I said, this is the Ben Lomond area, Sunset area, where it'll be edge milled and overlaid. Um, 387.66, and yes, that's, what is it, $300 difference? Pretty impressive as far as bids go there. But any questions?
Can you tell us about this company that's gonna do it?
Um, as discussed earlier, they're uh, the, the main guy has probably 34, 38 years. I know his, his laydown machine. That, they're all guys that have pulled from either Parsons Granite, Somewhere Post, and, and come to him, um, and worked with him. They did do the trench and everything for Ormond on um, Chimes View, did a very good job. So there is some history in the city, which is a good thing, um, to have him come in and do it. He has all the equipment and everything, and should do a great job.
Councilmember Stewart?
Um, so the number you just gave us was 387.666, but um, in the contract, I thought it was 387.758.
It is. That's my bet. He went back and reviewed the numbers. There, so instead of, there was a $334, there's actually only 200 and something difference there. So it, the, the one in the contract is correct.
Okay.
Yes, the 3, 388, or 387.734 is correct. Sorry.
Okay.
That's be, that's below our estimates from the engineers. Is that right?
Correct. Correct. The engineer's estimate, I, I believe it's close to 450?
469.758.
There you go, 4, 469.
It's always good news when that happens.
Yep, so it's, it's quite, it's a good, it's a good, good bid. And, and you know, we're starting, we're getting some good competitive bids out there.
Do you know where they're located?
Out of, I believe West Haven is where they're out of, based out of now.
Seeing no further questions, entertain a motion that we approve resolution 25-15.
So moved.
Second.
Motion second. Any other discussion? Councilmember Stevens?
Yes.
Councilmember Smythe?
Yes.
Councilmember Stewart?
Yes.
Councilmember Howard?
Yes.
Councilmember Howe?
Yes.
Thank you. Stay out there. Mr. Anderson, we're gonna consider resolution 25-16 approving agreement with Ormond Construction for the 900 East Reconstruction Project.
Okay. As our earlier discussion, this leads into the 900. Of that, I'll break it down quickly for you. Um, so this is a, a road reconstruction, so it's a complete rebuild. Um, they're gonna go through, remove all the asphalt, water line's gonna be replaced, some storm drain and some sewer. Um, of the 1.2 million, our engineer's estimate was 1.5, um, 1, 1.511. Um, it come in at the 1.242. Sewer of that portion, 21,600 is sewer. Um, 59,725 is storm drain. Fit, uh, about six, like we had in the other meeting, uh, 543 is streets. On here, I have 617, but you gotta add 96,000 for materials, which would be the 713, which Peter showed to you guys before there. And if you, you look at the bids, um, there, if you, if you're not wanna move forward with this, I know the concern with the water or anything. I, I don't know, this is a contractor that, he does underground work, so he has subbed out the road portion. If that's something we wanted to move forward with, I'd probably recommend either tableing it and seeing if they wanna do it, or have the road bid out as another separate project later on. Um, I'm not sure how you guys were, after talking to you in there, how you're feeling on that. But it kind of explains what we're gonna do, you know, with the water line. The water line's the critical part. Um, the, like I say, the engineer's estimate was 1.5, the highest bid was 1.3, which Bragger, they're the ones doing down below. The other ones have all done work for us. Orman's the one that did uh, Chimes last year for us, down there. They've done, they've done several projects for us too. Um, but all of them have done projects for us throughout the years. So, questions?
Councilmember Stewart?
Does the 1.2 include the potential items at the bottom, the 36, 37, 38, 39?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, the culinary water, the loop, yeah, the back fill, yes. Yes.
So the contract is with all of those?
Correct. Correct. Yeah. Yep.
In the background, you mentioned...
Sidewalks, uh, replacement. Are they going ahead and putting sidewalks in, or?
Yeah, it'll be, uh, if you look on there, I can't remember, there's about, there's about 11,000 square feet of sidewalks, so it'll be spot repaired, curb and gutter and everything, to make sure everything's sloping along with the storm drain and everything there. It's not a complete reconstruction, but it is, if there's any, there's about eight to 11 trees, I can't remember off the top of my head, that have done some damage, um, to the sidewalks. The trees will be removed and sidewalks will, the sidewalks will be repaired.
And six new production ramps will be...
Yep, that's all your corners. Yep, but whenever we do a project like this, you know, when it's a reconstruction, we go in and make sure the, the pedestrian ramps are all ADA accessible with the, you got the ramp and everything, the slope, and then there's a traction ramp that they need in there, to meet ADA standards now.
Okay. Any other questions?
Is that included in the price?
Mm-hmm. Yeah, yep, yep.
Thank you.
So you mentioned not doing the roads. Uh, how does that change this uh, contract?
Say, say that again.
The, you mentioned if we do the water, but not the road.
No, just the opposite, if you don't do the water, cause the water fund was in the, in the need. So that's my bad, but yeah. If you don't do the water, like I say, this guy, this contractor's a, he's a utility contractor, so he's subbed the asphalt's what he's done. He'll probably rip it out, but he'll have somebody come in and do that for him.
Okay.
Mayor?
Yeah, please.
John did uh, was Orman the only one that was subbing?
Every one of them.
Every one of them were?
Every one of them, yeah. There, there, all these guys on here, well, Staker Parsons would be the only one that wouldn't be...
I think Leon would, but that was just...
Yeah, like I say, every, every one of them on there, um, is, well, Parsons would be the only one that didn't sub it out. They'd be doing their own asphalt. But they probably subbed out the utility work to somebody else.
That's true. Okay, stay put there. Just sorry.
Yeah, no, you're good.
Uh, entertain a motion that we approve resolution 25-16.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Roll call vote, Councilmember Howe?
No.
Councilmember Howard?
Yes.
Councilmember Stewart?
Yes.
Councilmember Smythe?
Yes.
Councilmember Stevens?
Yes.
Uh, I may just say, because 44th, we did road, we did water lines last fall, 44th quarter, are those gonna be overlaid this year?
I believe they're on the chipset, if I'm not mistaken. I'll have to...
So they won't be overlaid?
No.
Okay.
The only ones we're overlaying right now is uh, Ben Lom- I'll get with you, Mayor.
Okay.
Let me double check. I think they might be on the chipset though. There. Thank you.
It's my neighborhood. Lot of questions.
Yeah, you're the same.
All right, item E, consideration of resolution 25-17 approving agreement with Washington Terrace City for senior center services. Mr. Dixon.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, as many of you are aware, um, Weber County, well, let me go back many more years. There was a time several years back where uh, South Ogden used to have a senior center. And uh, at the time, uh, the council uh, chose to, to no longer put money into the old city hall and the senior center, and uh, the result was, the property was sold, of course, and now there's townhomes. At the time, uh, Weber Human Services had indicated to us that, hey, we, we would like to see some consolidation of these centers because participation in many of the centers was just not, you couldn't justify the costs for the few seniors that were taking advantage of the, the programming. I recognize some were in favor of that decision and some were against that decision. With the decision that was made, the funding that was made available to support South Ogden Center was then reallocated to the Washington Terrace Center. And since that time, uh, our seniors have been encouraged to go and take advantage of that. Seniors can go to any center they want, right? But that was a part of the discussions when all of that took place. Now, fast forward to the last year, year and a half. Um, Weber County commissioners, um, who are also on the board of Weber Human Services have said, we no longer want to continue increasing funding to support our senior centers. And they made quite a push to um, have the local jurisdictions, the cities, pick up the costs that they have been covering. They have their arguments about federal funding for those programs has been more difficult and, and lots of things. So the mayor and I and others attended several meetings. Councilmember Smythe was involved. I don't wanna miss anyone, but I know there were others who may have been involved. At the end of the day, the county commissioner said, well, you can all submit proposals, those cities that have centers, and we'll decide what centers stay open, or that we continue to fund, and which ones we close. At the end of the day, the commissioner said, okay, we're not gonna do that anymore. We'll keep the centers open, but we're not willing to pay more than what we've been contributing. So they've been working with Washington Terrace because they have their, their center, and there's been a lot of negotiations and things going back and forth. This same interlocal agreement that is on the agenda tonight between South Ogden and Washington Terrace, I believe is on Washington Terrace's agenda, which is an interlocal between Washington Terrace and Weber Human Services. Washington Terrace is committing in this interlocal and with the interlocal with Weber Human Services that they will continue to pay for the upkeep and maintenance of the building, the utilities, and all of the costs associated with the physical senior center building. Weber Human Services has committed to continue to fund the programming and the staffing at current levels. So the delta between current levels and, hey, we've got to pay our people more is what South Ogden is committing to through this interlocal. That's the 6,000 and some odd dollars is going, our contribution will go to the terrace, and then the terrace ultimately will pay Weber Human Services for this personnel cost. The way it's written in the contract, it's a three-year contract, starting at the 6,000 and change, I don't have the exact number in front of me. Each year, there will be a CPI adjustment for inflation and a 3% increase to that $6,000. South Ogden is committing to pay the 6,000 this year, plus the CPI and 3%, moving forward for the next two years of the three-year agreement. That's the negotiations and where we've settled. The county just refuses to continue to increase funding to support seniors. Although it's been a county-provided service for decades, it was frustrating, but um, I think as it all boils down to you as the elected officials in South Ogden, I think it's a matter of saying, is $6,000 a good investment and contribution from us to the terrace so that center can continue to stay open? I believe it's open five hours a day, five days a week. And um, I haven't been for a while, but I, um, the last time I went, it's very well attended. It's a good, you know, center with lots of activities. So that's probably more than you cared to hear, but I wanted to provide some historical context to what's been happening with senior centers, especially as it relates to South Ogden City. Thank you, Mayor.
Councilmember Stewart?
Has there been any, has there been any movement on them receiving more funding? I know there was discussion about, oh, well, the county, maybe we'll talk to somebody about, can they get more funding?
I have not heard any updates um, on whether or not...
I know one of the meetings, they were gonna try to hit up the state legislature, even Washington DC, to try to get funding, more funding for aging services, but no, I think it's small price to pay for, to give our seniors a good, a good place to go. Councilmember Smythe?
I just wanna let everybody know, our manager did a beautiful job of, of making a point of what that center can do and what it does for our city, and and uh, he made good argument, and it was just a, a pleasure to see that. Thank you.
Thank you.
How much did we pay the, when we, before this agreement? What was our bill? Didn't we pay a certain amount to Washington Terrace?
No.
The county, the county was paying for it.
So the county has, they had it divided out. Say, let's just pick a number. They have $300,000 for senior centers. They would just divide that out, and that's a part of what went into all of this. It wasn't real equitable, really equitably distributed. So the cities that weren't getting the same were complaining. But our center, when we had it, got a portion of the county dollars to, to run it. Our obligation was the building, right, utilities and the upkeep. So when we closed ours, whatever portion of that was coming to us, specifically now, we told them, that goes to the Terrace Center, cause that's most likely where our seniors will go.
Are there other communities participating in that center, or is it just South Ogden and... Are there other communities participating in that center, or is it just South Ogden and Washington?
Just South Ogden, Riverdale has their own center, Roy has their own center, Ogden has several.
And North Ogden and Pleasant View have a similar deal, where North Ogden pays money to Pleasant View to help with theirs?
It's been a juggling act of how they have, yeah, put the money to wherever. And some of the centers are doing more than the others as far as services concerned. But they've been, the cities have been participating more too, to do that.
Okay. Entertaining motion to reapprove resolution twenty-five dash seventeen.
So moved.
Second. Thank you. Any further discussion? Uh, Councilmember Stewart?
Yes.
Councilmember Howard?
Yes.
Councilmember Smythe?
Yes.
Councilmember Stevens?
Yes.
Councilmember Howe?
Yes.
Thank you. Item F, consideration of resolution twenty-five dash eighteen, approving agreement with Iwork for code enforcement module. Is it Iwork? Iwork?
I don't know, I think everybody calls it a little something different. What do you call it, Lisa?
Everybody calls it Iworks, plural, but it really is Iwork.
There you go. Uh, so we use, uh, Iwork for a number of different, um, processes in the organization. Most of them are with, uh, in John's department, in the Public Works Department. This module specifically is for community development. And we have one piece of that module that we use, that Tyson uses for our permitting. When, uh, when we talked about bringing a code compliance officer on, we mentioned that part of the cost associated with that would be, uh, having some kind of a, a system that they use to be able to process cases. The police department was using spillmen to do that, and that's not an option with, outside of the police department. So we knew that there was going to be a system that we needed to, um, onboard. And we wanted the code compliance officer to be here to help select that. We have been going through a number of demos and looking at pricing, and we've decided that, uh, that adding the code module to the community development module that we already have was the best option for us. Because then, uh, while the co-compliance officer is out in the field, if he is looking at something or something looks amiss, he can get on the software and see if there's a permit that's already been pulled or is in process, or be able to help Tyson, as he's out and about. So we wanted those two to be together and Iwork, uh, seems to be working well for Tyson. So, um, the, the contract that is before you would just be adding the forty-five hundred dollars to an already existing, uh, module that we have, just adding code to this. So I know this is a little skeewampus, but really it's just adding that four thousand plus a five hundred dollar implementation cost to the eight thousand dollar module that we already have. The, the only downside, I think, is that we are going to have to extend the life of the contract that we already have in place to a three-year contract instead of a one-year contract. So I don't know that that's a downside, it just is what it is. Obviously, they don't want to do a five hundred dollar implementation for code compliance for a one-year contract. We did ask them if we could do a one-year contract instead of three, but it made the implementation cost, uh, cost prohibitive for, for me. I, I didn't feel good about paying that. Uh, so this will be locking us, both Tyson and Code, uh, into a three, a three-year contract with them, just increasing the cost by the four thousand dollars.
Is this annual or just one?
Annual.
Annual?
Mm-hmm.
For the implementation also?
Uh, only a one-time cost for the implementation.
Other questions? Okay. Entertaining motion to reapprove resolution twenty-five dash eighteen. So moved.
Second.
Any further discussion? Councilmember Howe?
Yes.
Councilmember Stevens?
Yes.
Councilmember Smythe?
Yes.
Councilmember Howard?
Yes.
Councilmember Stewart?
Yes.
Thank you, Senator. Uh, item G, consideration of resolution twenty-five dash nineteen, approving a funding agreement with Weber Area Council of Governments for Fortieth Street construction. Mr. Dixon.
I'm gonna use a nice visual to represent a very boring agreement, because everybody likes pictures.
How do we get it to work? That's amazing.
I know, that's a feat in and of itself. So originally, the city was planning to do a complete tear-out and rebuild of Chimes View Drive and Fortieth between Washington and Riverdale Road. It's been a long process because it's, we, we've secured federal funding, so the application, I don't even remember, John, when the original application was submitted, it's probably been five, six-plus years because the funding is so far out. You can imagine the cost increases, um, since that time. So when we, uh, started the design and the environmental stuff, it was, um, it was apparent that the, the funds that we received from the federal programs weren't gonna even do half of it. And so the decision was made that we would split the project into two phases. As you know, Chimes View Drive is Phase One, and that's represented here in the orange. And, uh, that water line was completed last year. The property acquisition and all of the, the other items are being, uh, completed this year with construction to be next, construction season in twenty-twenty-six. At the same time, we kept that side moving, that phase, the, um, our engineering firm created Phase Two of the project, which is all the blue, coming the one way up from Riverdale Road, all the way to Washington. And then, of course, both sides of Fortieth until this, the split. The water line for that project will be completed, is it this year? It's been happening, my goodness, it's happening, of course. And the expected construction and rebuild of that section, Phase Two, will be twenty-twenty-seven. So next year, Chimes View and then the following year. As a result, knowing that costs had gone up, we made application to Weber County to see if we could get additional county funds to help meet our ten percent match for the federal dollars. What's before you tonight is the city's acceptance of Weber County sales taxes that are restricted for transportation projects. So the total project of Phase, the cost for Phase Two is five point four eight three million. So let's just call it five point five. Weber County sales taxes, that's in this agreement, we were awarded three million, one hundred and eleven thousand, eight hundred and one, with two million coming from federal and state dollars, and the city's portion is three hundred and seventy-one thousand, one hundred and ninety-nine dollars. So it's a great project. I think the county, I appreciate those who worked on it. Our engineering firm did a lion's share of, of putting this all together. But again, it's, um, I think the county recognized that this is a regional road. This is, this is not just South Ogden residents, and so it's, it's great that our portion's only three hundred and seventy-one thousand, and then the rest is, uh, county and, um, federal dollars, so.
Any further, we were, uh, Weber Council of Government, uh, WACOG, is the fifteen mayors, Weber County, the three county commissioners, council member from Ogden City. And so they have that pot of money for road projects, and there's a subcommittee that looks through those and then presents to the full, to the full council. So we've had a few financed through this, and it's very helpful, and part of your sales tax goes to this, and, and then that group decides how it's, how it's spent, so.
And I would, our, I would add, Mayor, that this is a huge success because we got the, we got this funded for twenty-twenty-seven. I think a lot of the projects they're looking at are further out.
They are.
But because of our phasing and our need, um, those dollars were awarded so that we can keep this project going. So it is a great resource to get some local match money.
And there's a lot of competition because of all the fifteen different cities in the county as well. Councilmember Stewart?
So when we talk about our portion, what the city's gonna be matching, we'll make up whatever isn't covered by other funding sources, right?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, if there are overages on the five point four total project, that will be a hundred percent on the city. If it stays at five point four, our contribution's only three hundred and seventy-one, so thank you, because that is important. It used to not be that way, but anymore, they've said, hey, any overages is gonna be on you, so.
We have confidence in John that he's gonna keep that under that amount. Is that right, John?
I'm gonna try, okay.
He controls the weather, he controls the dirt.
Can we, can we send immediate notification to Washington Terrace, so that they don't close the same road?
Yeah, we're closing ours every year for, this is year two of four, so yeah, tell, tell them they're, they can't.
Actually, uh, no, this was a project on WACOG. Is, is that one of their projects that they wanted to be completed in, in the area here?
Yeah, they evaluated this as a high priority, that's why we got funded and, and I think our project probably jumped ahead of a few others so that we could keep our phases going next year and the following.
Okay, entertaining motion to reapprove resolution twenty-five dash nineteen.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Councilmember Stewart?
Yes.
Councilmember Howard?
Yes.
Councilmember Smythe?
Yes.
Councilmember Howe?
Yes.
Councilmember Stevens?
Yes.
All right, our discussion item tonight is the city policy on the use of parks for private events. Mr. Dixon, anybody else that's involved in this?
Yeah, thanks, Mayor. I'm not gonna lie, before the meeting, I was going around saying, Danielle, do you wanna take this one? Chief Story, whose name was brought up too.
That's why he left.
So I agreed to kick off the, the discussion and then invite Danielle, John, um, I think it's just, it's meant to be a discussion item. Some history, and I'll invite any of you to correct me and jump in and add to my, uh, little historical background. But we, we do have, um, we have had for the last many years, I would say, maybe even since I've been here, ten, fifteen years, where we have a, at least one I'm aware of, a party that likes to do fireworks at Friendship Park. And it's my understanding, I've never been and seen it, but it's my understanding, it's a pretty impressive show, and the event gets busier and bigger every, every year. I think what instigated this, Danielle, was this same individual asking about, um, get up, come on, come and join us, come and join us. So we recognized as, as staff that we really don't have a good, um, policy or a set of requirements related to liability. And before we went too far, we thought, what's the council's policy? What are your desires? I think it's Layton City recently said, no fireworks?
Yeah, no more fireworks in their parks, which is what sort of started this conversation, because now everybody's reaching out to us, asking if they can do fireworks in our park. They're like, Layton won't let us do it, can we come there? So that's kind of how the conversation, um, began.
So we thought, well, this is a great thing for the council to discuss and decide. If, if you decide, yeah, we're okay with allowing private groups to come in and launch fireworks in our park, staff would go to work in putting together the policies and agreements to protect us from a liability standpoint. Or if the decision is, we don't wanna take on potential liability, it's, it's, um, then we, we will go that route. John, Danielle, anything to add?
I'll just, John, John, other, other than maybe a mess that they leave, what, is it a problem? I mean, sometimes I think some of these things are, it's not a problem yet, do we, do we wait till it's a problem? Which I sometimes do like, because I think government oversteps, but.
The one you're having now, they think it's South Ogden's event. It's that big. They had four food trucks, they had the car, the thing full, they're requesting staff to come in later at night to accommodate their restrooms, do things for them. I mean, it's.
That's what I need to know.
Those, those ways, when he first started, it was just, hey, I come in, light the fireworks, left a mess. We got on him for the mess. He's been pretty good about cleaning up the mess. But each year, it just grows, and there's more requests from our end there. Liability, I don't know, you know, that's another thing that probably, you know, I don't know if you get cam up here where they're, you know, they're, what you call it, the drop zone cam? The drop zone, I don't know, you know, I don't know how they're controlling it. I mean, I've lived in the city long enough, I remember when the young gal over here got hit by the firework. You know, I, I don't think we wanna go down that road again either, you know, for, as far as you, some safety precautions, you know. But, I mean, we'll accommodate, you know, they've been doing it up to this point. Yeah, they've been doing it, it's been a long time, their friendship, I know they've done a long time. You'll get a lot of them too, um, club heights, they'll come in and do it. Makes me a little nervous down there, you got a lot of trees, a lot of dry brush. And the mess is probably the biggest thing.
That's what I was.
You know, they leave their cones, their balls, and we're stuck picking it up for a couple hours. And then the debris, looks like we shredded napkins with a mower across the lawn, it was like a snowed or it's light brown, so.
Mayor, could I ask, Danielle, um, would you mind just commenting on, I think you contacted the trust about our insurance, could you talk about the liability?
Yeah, I talked to the risk management through trust, and they definitely said it was something we have to do, like with the legal department, have our lawyers put together something, and the amount of liability that would be required is something we have to figure out. I know Chief Story had talked to the state fire marshal on sort of what the rules are. And I believe it was, if you are launching anything outside of what you can buy from the grocery store parking lot, there's a bunch of permitting things, and that's what's been launching at these previous ones. So we're not even really kind of in state compliance in that realm. So I think what staff is kind of recommending is, we need to come up with some sort of policies and procedures on if we do allow them, what are the levels? If we do, right now, all they do is sort of rent the Bowery and they get to do these things. Do we need to extend that? What do this, does the certificate of insurance need? Who's the additional certificate holders? Like, I think that's just a bigger conversation, but the trust's recommendation was, here's a list of things that should go into a legal document that you should have the city attorney put together.
And that could really limit the interest, right? If you're telling me, oh, you need a, a million-dollar liability policy, I'm like, I just wanna launch fireworks for my neighbors.
Right. Which is what I don't wanna stop, because it's not that big a deal.
Then we're not protected.
If we stick to the state standards of, if they're launching mortars, it's totally different than launching the small things.
They still have to have the permitting for that.
Explained thoroughly, you know, or how, so.
I can see this for my house, and this is big as South Ogden. That one and the one that somebody's doing up in Pleasant View, I mean, it is, they're huge. In fact, doesn't the fire truck go up to the one in Pleasant View? I've seen our fire truck up there.
Pleasant Valley?
Yeah, Pleasant Valley.
I don't know.
Yeah, there's, there's one that we, that some private group does, but that's on school district property, so.
Well, I think she's referring to Pleasant Valley, is that the library?
Pleasant Valley, it's right, it's, it's right out there.
Just in the neighborhood.
Yeah.
It's, it's the cul-de-sac of fire.
And it's huge.
It's fantastic. Those are all Utah ones.
They get larger every year. That's the sad part, is they, they keep expanding and expanding, and our liability must be something.
As of now, there's none, like, we're not requiring them to provide any type of, of insurance.
Right, but if something was to happen, right? And then the other question I have is, so say we make a list of, these are requirements, and then they say, well, we don't wanna, we don't wanna deal with your paperwork, we're just gonna show up and we're gonna have a party, and we're not gonna ask for permission, we're just gonna do it. Then what?
But, but I think that could happen at a family reunion here at the park. You rent the Bowery, you get a little crazy, I don't know, maybe you get, you're having, well, I mean, there could be injuries and damage there too, and we're not liable for any of that.
But I think sanctioning an actual event to take space on property, we're taking some of that liability.
Which is why we may not wanna sanction it, we might just wanna.
That's, that's the question.
Yeah, I mean, it is a, this goes back to, you know, public use. It's a public park. And if they're in, if they're in violation, launching mortars and stuff that are against Utah code, then we can certainly enforce that, and, and maybe should enforce that. But it's a public park, and people are allowed. But it's a public park, and people are allowed to do lawful things in a public park.
And I believe in... No longer lawful.
Well, that's what I'm saying. Where, the only, the only unlawful thing is launching mortars and stuff that are against code, right? But if fireworks are permitted in that area and a public gathering is permitted in that area, how do you govern that? By requesting permits. Now, you could say, if a gathering has more than X amount of people in a park, you, we require a permit just for safety reasons. But then again, if we do that, now we're taking on that liability that we're going to control that party, whether it's police presence or fire presence or whatever, so I, I think if, if we said fireworks are not allowed in parks, that'd be one thing, right? And, and, and then if they went and lit them off there, then they would, then that's a, a criminal matter with the police department, right? But, yeah, permitting that, I'm not a big fan of it.
I mean, even for us, for South Ogden days, I mean, we have to do mass gatherings and there's lots of things that the fire department does when these are being launched, and I wish Chief Story was here, because I believe the first question the state fire marshal asked him was like, if you have it listed that's no fireworks in parks and then you're allowing them, that's its own story, but we don't have them listed that way, so maybe that's part of the bigger conversation, because if we allow, do we allow it in all parks if we allow it? Do we only allow it at Friendship? Do we, like?
But we restrict fireworks by area, you know, within X amount of feet of, you know, Birch Creek or, you know, that kind of stuff. And I think we can still limit where fireworks are allowed, you know, we don't allow them east of Harrison, because it's too close to the mountains. Strictly outlawing them in parks, I, I, and that's a probably bigger discussion, I'm not a huge fan of, because I know I have a lot of neighbors that are elderly and have asked me not to light fireworks on our street because they're in bed already. And, and so I do, I go to a park and do them, because fireworks are allowed in our parks right now.
If we, if this is permitted, would this mean that, that we would have them do this each weekend, or each week we would have a group come in and perform with this aspect there?
I mean, I don't think we require that, like, I'm not sure. I mean, it would be open to anybody, or certain fire, there's fire year, or fireworks times, like, timeline that we have, so...
Yeah, my, my concern is that, that's in the middle of a residential area. We do restrict fireworks when we're in a drought situation, because we can say, no fireworks in this certain area because of the safety of it, but...
Well, I feel like state, right now, it's only, you know, two days before the holiday and, and three days after, like, that's, those are the only times you're allowed to shoot them off. Anyways, and I think as staff, we're open to any recommendations and happy to do whatever, but it's just a bigger conversation. I do believe we would recommend not allowing fireworks until we figure out what this policy is and procedure looks like.
Are we worried about? There've been very few problems with the one, other than the mess, it's been cleaned up now. Do we wait and see if all of a sudden we get a flood of Davis County people blowing up our parks before we make a decision?
Well, they're asking, they're, they're asking, we just want to know what to tell them.
I'm all for preemptive, but I'm also all for government not being a buzzkill all the time.
Right.
Yeah.
They're asking you if they can do it?
Yeah, we've gotten, we've been getting online requests asking if they can have fireworks shows in the park. And then the last one Chief Wes got was, hey, because Layton's not allowing them, can I do them there? So it, it's already happening, like, the, the questions are coming in. I'm not sure if the gentleman who does it for July 4th would ask anything, I think he would just come in and rent the Bowery as he always would, so...
Mayor?
These are new individuals.
They're always done in the, in the timeframe, right, we're talking about the timeframe that the state allows fireworks, right? We're not talking about a special event.
It's, it's July 4th and 24th, or is it?
Where it's already allowed.
Oh, oh.
I've received questions about having a special event that somebody that launches, does it professionally, and they want to do it on our property. So it's not just doing it inside the normal days, it's outside of that, it's more, I mean, it's, the amount of requests that we receive is, it's, we've never had this before. Obviously, David, or Layton has shut that down, so maybe that's why, but...
How many requests have you had, Chief?
I've had multiples. She's had multiples as well, so I've had phone calls.
What, two, three, or four, or five?
Well, I've had at least three.
Three.
So, and from my point of view, launching in fireworks in a park is the safest place you can do it. But, you know, doing it during the regular days that are allowed at the legislative session, or the days that are outlined by the state, that's a different... I think we're talking about multiple things here, not just one.
See, I would say this, the ones allowed by the state, the parks are public, let them use Utah fireworks in our public parks. And if someone wants to do it outside of that window, then it becomes an event and a permit and mass gathering and all those kinds of things. That's, that's how I would handle it.
Personally, I'd like to see everybody light their fireworks off in the park.
And not...
It's a lot easier for us, it's a lot easier for the complaints and stuff, but, you know, like, we just need direction. Outside of the large show, I mean, they're going to have to get special permits anyway, so...
Could I ask a question, Mayor?
Please.
I guess mainly for John, where do they launch from? They just go out in the middle of the grass, and do we, I guess one concern I would have is if we got all these burn, burn marks in our fields. I mean, if we, if we allow it, can we put...
They're respectful in, in the grass, they do it in the dirt, usually in the dirt where he launches.
Okay.
Like in the ball fields?
I think that would maybe lend to a reason we might want to require some permit, so that they could sign that, hey, we will launch them in non-gra, you know, to protect our...
Couldn't you do that just by signage on the field, though?
Yeah, yeah, just something to say, if we are going to allow it, then, hey, this is where you can launch and not...
Clean up after yourself.
Not have them launching...
Please clean up after yourself. Like, I mean, we could do a fireworks sign right at the beginning of the park, right? That talks about, you know, please be courteous of others, don't burn grass, launch on dirt or concrete.
Yeah, something like that.
I, I agree with the mayor, other than out, outside of the three days before and three days after, and the, and the time of day limits, right? Then, then they're public parks, let them launch fireworks.
Utah fireworks from this days, these hours.
And, and I think we could do a sign, it would be fairly inexpensive, and then, then there's some sort of expectation, and maybe you get a, 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 a police drive-by every once in a while. But they're not, I mean, our guys aren't going to go out there and harass them anyways, but if they're burning a field, you know, so, you know, Sergeant Christensen might want to hop out and say something about it, but, you know, I, I just, I, I really have a problem telling residents that they can't use their public...
Mayor? Can I just have you clarify, when you say Utah fireworks, what that means?
Well, the ones bought in Utah at the grocery store are legal to be shot off. It's the ones you get from out of state or out of country that are a little more serious.
Because there are manufacturers of the big mortars here in Utah as well, so...
Yeah, they're limited by gram size and, and everything else, there's...
So you're just saying legal fireworks?
Legal fireworks, yeah. But I mean, I guess you're not illegally buying them from, but I don't know, maybe you are, I don't know this.
Yeah, don't go to Tavistin and buy, you know, a thousand bucks worth of fireworks. And bring them back.
I, I can see that we need the, that public parks are for public use and enjoyment and that, but my concern are the resident around the area, yeah. And that's, that's my concern, because that park is right, right on the outskirts of that are all residential areas.
I, I, I see where you're coming from on that, Doug, but that's kind of a burden for living by a park. I, I don't like the pickleball lights on till 10 o'clock, because I, I'm old, I go to bed at nine, but they're on.
Doink, the sound of...
Yeah, all the plastic doinking.
And as long as they clean up, because it's a mess.
And I think cleaning up's a big part of that, I, I, there, there shouldn't be a burden on the city other than, I mean, our services, you know, like I said, police presence, your drive-bys and that kind of stuff, but, yeah.
But it sounds like at least the event one is asking for more services. They're wanting more from our people.
I was just going to ask, so if we just had a sign in the park that said, here's how you use fireworks, and for some reason, that didn't happen. And let's say they were using Evanston fireworks, and it lit a house on fire. How, without collecting their information ahead of time, even if it's not taxing, even if it's not a charge, even if it's not, you know, burdensome, how would we rectify that situation? Because the resident who has their house damaged is going to come to the city to have that liability filled.
Right. Is that the same though, is, is that the same though as your dog attacks me at the park?
Yeah. I mean, that's really a civil matter between the, the two...
Well, we don't know who it is.
That's up to the homeowner. I mean, I'm not, I'm not trying to put the whole onus back on that homeowner that had the property damage. The, the problem is, if we, if we made it a criminal matter and set it by ordinance where it was a criminal violation, right? I think I've got my terminology right, but the, the, the civil liability is between those two persons. As a city, I, we should stay out of it as much as we could.
And I agree, I'm just saying that resident is going to file that lawsuit with us, because they're not going to know who that is.
Understood, but they won't go anywhere. I mean, we could talk to our attorneys about it and see what, what they think about putting, now, to your point, putting up a sign may even make us somewhat culpable, right? I, I don't think so, because it's not enforced by ordinance, like, we wouldn't put an ordinance attached to that like we would on other signs. But, yeah, they'd probably sue us, we'd have to talk to our attorneys if, if we'd be actually liable for it, I don't think we would, but...
As it stands now, there's no, there's no policy. So, if someone wanted to do the July 4th fireworks, could they still go ahead and do that with, without us having a policy? Because we don't have any guidelines at the present time, do we?
No, we have allowed it in the past, but like John said, it's gotten much bigger. I don't know, is it, at what point do we have a mass gathering, or is that a, is that a health department thing? Okay, so if the event got so big, they'd have to comply with health department regulations.
Right, and if the 4th of July event has had food trucks and things like that, and, I mean, we have to have permits and food gather, and I believe with the state, if any money is being made off the event, it's a totally another permit when it comes to the fire, the fireworks, that was one thing Chief Story had found out.
Sounds like there's, there's like laws in place between the health department and the state?
But if we're not telling them that they have to go and get, because they might not know that, or they're...
Why would we, other than enforcing it by law, it's, it's not on us to tell them that.
But if we know they have food trucks there and they're not dealing with the health department...
That's the health department's problem.
But it's taken back to the city, so if we leave them...
We'll get sued no matter what we do.
Right, and that's, that's the thing.
Will they win?
Right, that's, that's the thing, that, that the more we put in place, and the more we restrict our, our residents' access, the more they can come after us. And I'm not saying ignorance is bliss, but the health department enforces those laws, Chief Park doesn't. The, the, you know, the state enforces fireworks laws, and if we have an officer that drives by and sees an obvious firework that's illegal, they have the capability to, to enforce that law. But, and mass gatherings, same thing, there's laws already in the books for mass gatherings, if, if we have a presence there and see that, then we can enforce that. But other than that, I, I have a hard time not just staying out of it.
But as the venue, we would ask for proof of that stuff.
Only if we rent it out, we're not renting it out.
But that's what's happened, people are renting the Bowery and then putting on these big events. And so, and to Summer's point of view, like, if we're going to allow fireworks, great, but maybe they should fill something out, so we know that they're going to be doing fireworks in the park, otherwise you might have 50 people come out at the same, the same time. So do, you know, should we have something, just like renting the Bowery?
Wouldn't we have their name on file once they rented the Bowery?
But if, are we requiring them to rent the Bowery to do fireworks in the park?
But do we ask the people who rent the Boweries, do we specifically ask every single person, okay, what is your intent? What are you going to be doing? Are you going to be doing something illegal inside the park?
There, there's an option on there for them to tell, usually they'll say Bowery, and they'll describe what they're doing.
And if they just say big picnic and they start lighting off fireworks, then, then, then again, that, the fireworks portion of that is off of our plate.
Yeah.
I think, I think what we're, what we're, the reason we're talking about it is because Layton said no.
We're giving more interest, for sure.
Yeah, and, but...
But we certainly could...
It's a long way to go.
My thing is...
The direction I'm feeling this is headed is, let it go and let's see if it does become more of a problem, and then if it does, then we come back and say, hey, these are the problems we're seeing. Is there something we need to do more from a policy ordinance perspective?
I don't feel comfortable with that, because the liability to the city is just overwhelming in that aspect there.
I, I don't think, I, I don't agree unless it's our event. It's because it's our property, get hurt out here on the skate park.
The only piece that we're kind of, there's concern about, we're not concerned about, could we, could we loop the trust in for this conversation and get a better, like, they're the ones that are going to have to pay the claim ultimately, and/or charge us for our experience that we have by letting that ride or paying a claim out. So, would it be valuable to you guys to have them be part of this conversation, so that they can get these questions answered versus just letting it ride, or do you want to just let it ride without their perspective?
We can get their input. I, I just, I look at it as, people do dangerous things at the parks. There's mean dogs, there's, you know, have a dunk tank and I get hit in the face with a baseball. You know, there's things you do at parks at family unions that are, that are dangerous, and, you know, you're going to hit the neighbor's house, because I, I just, I, I just don't know if we're targeting fireworks. Chief Park? And if I'm naive, you can tell me I'm naive, I get it.
Been sitting too quiet too long.
I anticipate there's going to be problems. We already received complaints from Pleasant Valley and Friendship Park of, these guys are lighting off so many fireworks, all the debris is landing in my yard. That problem's going to increase. I would suggest find out what the reason or the rationale was behind Layton City acting the way they have and denying this. They've probably had a, a larger experience with this for a longer time than South Ogden has. But with them shutting it down, there's got to be something going on, there's a rationale behind that. And with them doing that, our problems and our complaints here as a result of this are going to come, are going to also increase. So, I like many, like government to mind its own business and stay out of mine, but also people want, don't want other people's debris lining in their yard.
Yeah, isn't there already a law against that, in a sense, though? I mean...
Prove where that came from.
I'm just, that's, it seems like, that's a...
I don't have answers right now.
That's already a...
It's curious...
There's already a law, there's already a law against that.
I think that during these events, and, and, like I said, maybe we talk to the trust or...
I think that's good, good advice, too.
Yeah, but I think that more the hands-off approach is probably better. And I think that for existing laws, we should enforce them. If, if, if it's a mass gathering and there's 500 people in that parking lot and there shouldn't be, and, and that's a mass gathering, then we need to enforce that. If there's a, like I said, the, the food trucks is a health department thing, not a, not a police department enforcement thing. I think for what Chief Park and his officers do, they do their job well enough that they can figure out when they need to intervene.
The wise words of a Mr. Bradshaw years ago was, we talked a lot about it with the trails, and that is Warner makes safe.
It's your choice.
It's your choice.
And I wonder if there isn't some wisdom in that to say, you know, if we're going to allow it, we have to make it safe. Or we can just warn them, launch fireworks at your own risk, or whatever, to where... Because I think we're council member, how some of his thoughts were, if we do regulate it, then maybe more of that's on us to enforce and be sure that they are launching according to our ordinance. Whereas if we just warned the public to, you know, they're responsible and be safe with using fireworks appropriately or something. I don't know. I think it's wise to connect, again, with the trust on it and have some conversation. But if you guys say, we don't need to talk with the trust anymore, let's just roll with it and we'll move forward. I think there is some urgency there. Obviously, there's a group that wants to do this. So, we also don't want to hold them up if there's no reason to hold them up. And so, I think we do need some direction on what would you like next as a council?
Could we call Leighton, find out why they said no? And then we could talk about it at our next council meeting, some of the details of it. I think it's important for us to find out what our liability is with the trust aspect of it. I'm concerned about the residents that are around the park.
Are we telling Davis no?
Telling who?
Davis to come here. Davis County, come here. We're saying no.
No. We've just had, we think the increase in interest in doing it here is because Leighton is not allowing it.
All because of Leighton.
And I don't know if we're assuming that. We may have heard specifically that, yeah, Leighton isn't letting us. Mayor, I think for the sake of those interested, and I'm just, if you guys disagree, disagree. But I'm since, I don't know that we want them to wait until the next meeting for a decision because I'm sure they're trying to plan the event and food trucks. So, I guess in my opinion, what we're hearing is status quo, whatever we've done in the past, until we revisit this and potentially make changes.
Mr. Terry, when is the proposed date for your event?
We're looking at the last day of the season, so it's like at least twenty-five.
Of July? Okay, thank you.
I mean, until the policy is created or changes, I have a hard time holding up someone from doing an event they've done while we're trying to evaluate where this is headed. And I'm getting a sense more right now that, hey, we want to be more hands-off on this. Great, let's let it go, status quo for now. But I'm not suggesting we delay the conversation. We'll get with Leighton, we'll get with the trust. We could have this discussion. But for the sake of those planning right now because it's so close, my recommendation would be let them move forward. And we'll revisit this because nothing may come as we revisit it. And it would be a shame to have someone have to cancel or move an event and us go, yeah, we revisited it and we're okay with allowing it. Well, it's too late. I can't throw an event together in a week, right?
I mean, as long as they're not breaking any current existing laws, they're fine. Within the timeframe, the dates, the mass gatherings, the food trucks, whatever laws are in place, as long as they're abiding on them, then, like you said, hands-off.
I agree with that, but when did they make the request?
Oh, I don't know. It's probably been a month or a week, several weeks.
So they've had plenty of time to bring it before us. You know, we're not in the eleventh power aspect, so to speak.
They just called the last week or two, so we haven't really had a chance to meet and discuss it.
I'm concerned about the residents there, is my concern.
As long as they're not breaking any laws, they should be allowed to do their...
So are the fireworks within the laws?
Yeah.
Of what?
Those certain days, the times, the types.
You have three days before the holiday and three days after. You have until ten or eleven o'clock at night and then midnight on the 4th of July. And as long as, yeah, something like that. And as long as they're not gathering more people than are allowed by law and their food trucks are licensed and in compliance with the health code, they're not breaking any laws, let them do their thing.
So they're not firing the fireworks out of that window that...
Correct.
Right. And they're safe and sane fireworks, or whatever Utah legal fireworks are.
Legal fireworks. And...
Well, that could be questionable.
And if they don't launch them in the park, in my backyard, my neighbor could be in his front yard on his driveway launching the same fireworks.
Right.
So to the chief's point, we'd rather have them, we'd rather have them in the park...
Than in the middle of my street.
Than in the middle of the street, but...
But I still would like to know why Leighton said no.
Yeah, no.
There has to be a pretty significant reason why they said no.
They don't like people.
And they're not having it there.
They don't like liberties and freedoms.
Is that the consensus or the direction?
Yes, Leighton's coming.
Status quo. Next meeting, we'll have more information about Leighton. And also, we'll either have someone from the trust here or we'll have some more information on the trust.
Have to pay them if they come.
Those are all permitted uses anyways. Don't we already require permits for that stuff outside of...
Or we never had a request.
Right. And that's current law, right? Would we prevent anybody that wants to put a concert on from using our city parks?
Well, I think that's different than fireworks.
It is different, but it's still permitted. I mean, they can come and request to use our park and we can put it on a permit. They can pay the application fees and all that other kind of stuff.
Not sure there'd be space. Isn't there gonna be so many... That's why we do it at the junior high was because everybody's at the park. I just, I don't know if there would be space even at our parks for that. Give me the dates. I got a free fireworks show. I'm all for it.
Well, what are the regulations on spacing and everything? I mean, those guys have to...
So where would they put that, Chief? Would it be in the parking lot there? Or would it be in the south? That's entirely different than my neighbor setting our fireworks. The pyrotechnic is entirely different.
But that's all state mandated anyways. That's, all those shells and spacing and all that is state law. But do we have an event permit that would allow them to use the park?
That's part of this question.
Okay.
Then we probably don't.
Mr. Mayor?
Please.
Uh, we do have what's known as a commercial entertainment business license. It's for any single event, series of events, or ongoing activity or business occurring alone or as part of another activity to which the public, upon payment of an admission charge, is invited or allowed to watch, listen, or participate.
So there's...
Doesn't, it doesn't say either way. It's just a license that we can provide. It does say that it is, like, if their people are charged. So if people aren't charged, that might be something different. I have never had anybody ask me about this license, so I'm just reading the code here.
So there is, I mean, it is good to know there's something on the books, whether it's extensive enough, I don't know.
So, man, I think the question is, I don't want to compare Ozzy Osbourne to our fireworks show.
There is no comparison.
Let's stick with fireworks. And is the council, okay, we've already discussed the state-approved fireworks you can buy at the grocery store. Within the dates and times permitted, okay? We've already talked about. Are you interested in having some requirement that says, okay, if you're a pyrotechnician and you're gonna come do a show with larger mortars, that we want them to come and get something from us so that we know and our fire department is aware? This is gonna be a...
Well, yeah, absolutely, because it's outside the window and so it looks very illegal. So...
I guess I'm trying to answer the question.
We would need some kind of requirement for that.
Okay, okay. Because we can start drafting something along those lines for the bigger-than-state fireworks and...
And outside of the windows.
And outside of the windows. Okay. We'll talk about Ozzy another time.
It's important for us to not only look at how we run our parks and the events and how we realize that the parks are public property and that we want the people enjoying our parks. But on the other hand, we need to have these permits, not only for our parks but for our Boweries. Because there are events that they want to go ahead and use their Boweries and we need to have that information. I don't feel comfortable until we get those policies in place to have someone come in and do their events. We need to have some type of situation where we can protect the liability of the city. But, you know...
And we do have liability coverage. Even with the skate park, that's the part that surprised me the most. Maybe I already mentioned this to you, but I reached out to the trust and I said, hey, we're gonna break ground and do a ribbon cutting. How does this impact our liability insurance? And I was surprised to hear him say, actually, you don't need to change a thing. One of the lowest claim parks is a skate park. And that's because you expect going to a skate park, that there's gonna be trips and stumbles and falls. And it's just a nature of that. But I was surprised that that was one of their lower claims was actual skate parks for that reason. But anyway, we still have liability coverage on all of our parks and facilities. So we are covered. It's just more a question of, do we want to require a permit? And is there an insurance requirement we want from someone doing an event? So it's, although liability is always important in a discussion, all of our parks, all of our public facilities are covered by our general liability insurance. And it protects us against certain claims.
I would say yes on the permit and insurance. They need to show us that they have adequate insurance to do it there. But I think we ought to go status quo and permit these events until we get those policies in place.
Mr. Dixon, when you're doing that research as far as talking to the trust or whatever, would you also go back to state code and find out what requirements pyrotechnic companies have to meet for the state outside of those holiday windows? I'm certain that if you're a large pyrotechnic company and we could even ask the one we just approved this evening, I'm certain there are other requirements that they have to meet statewide, just because that's the state code.
I think that's an excellent idea.
Good. All right, great discussion. Item seven, reports, direction to city manager. Councilor Stewart, let you start tonight.
So in the last few weeks, there have been several things put on by the Utah League of Cities and Towns. LPC, which I participated in, they had one on tariffs, taxes, and Doge. And then they had one on wildfire and communities. They talked about the wildfire urban interface, which most of our community probably isn't right up on the foothills, but part of it is. And they talked about having defensible space, how important that was. I think that's a good thing for our community to... Hopefully, they already have been thinking about it. But they talked about the difference between the homes that burned in Paradise and those that didn't. And part of it was how well they had made a perimeter around their house that didn't have as much stuff that could burn, right? Like, we all like our trees and our shrubs and stuff, but they said maybe not right up against the house. So that was useful, good information. They did talk about a fire agreement. Did you participate in that, Matt? Okay. It wasn't an LPC. It was a wildfire community...
We're trying to figure that out at the county level as well. So we should have more information on that tomorrow.
Okay. Because there was an agreement that they were talking about making with them. But then it would, you would share the cost of, like, you'd get to a certain point and then you would turn it over to them. But you have to have all these other things in place if you're gonna do this agreement with them. Anyway, you can fill us in on it when you have more information. Okay. And then I also went to the data governance summit. And there was lots of things to think about with that. One of the questions I came away with is, who is in charge of compliance for our Government Data Privacy Act? Do we have somebody that's in charge of that?
It's Lisa.
Okay. So, I don't know how official, but... Okay, well, great. I'm so glad that we have somebody responsible for that because we have a deadline that we're supposed to be meeting as of a new law that was passed. They talked about, they wanted to help people. They said, we know that people are not in compliance, but they want to help people get to more compliance because it is more and more pervasive that more and more information is being collected. And one of the conversation pieces was, okay, we have guidelines that we need to have this information and we need to keep it. But sometimes we don't have a guideline of, now you need to get rid of it, right? Like, keep it for three years and then get rid of it, not just keep it in perpetuity, right? Whether it's in hard copy or whether it's electronic that we're storing these. And they talked about privacy statements that we need on our websites about what are we collecting? Why are we collecting it? What are we using it for? How are we protecting it, et cetera? Just, right now, I don't know that we have any of those on Facebook or our city page.
We do. It's at the bottom of the homepage. You'll see privacy policy and you can click on it and read it. And then, just in the past few months, I've been adding those privacy statements to the bottom of all the forms that we collect data on, so...
I was really surprised when I filled out the registration for this conference or summit or whatever it's called. It had a statement saying, this information is considered a public record and can be requested and whatever. Anyway, it just was new to me.
That's part of what we're trying to get done. So we're starting to comply. I'm sure we are not a hundred percent there, but we're working on it.
Okay. So there are people at the state level, too, that are happy to answer questions and happy to help. Sometimes you just don't know what questions to ask because it's brand new. And then as I came past the skate park today, I was wondering, there had been discussion, there had been mention of needing a special surface because we have a freeze thaw different here than what they've done with skate parks elsewhere. And I was wondering, at what point are we gonna look at what is it that we need to do and what is it gonna... at what point are we going to look at, what is it that we need to do and what is it going to cost and when is it going to be applied and et cetera. And that's all for me.
I can answer either.
Thank you. Councilor Smythe, great report.
First of all, hopefully everybody watched our mayor on Facebook today. Did a very good job of announcing all the activity and things that are going on and what the city expects. Very well done. Second, I've been watching the Utah Transit Authority videos. Very interesting to see what we're doing in the state and what they're expecting and how they're spending the money. It's been very interesting. That's it.
Thank you. Councilor Stevens?
Thank you, Mayor. I mentioned South Ogden Days on the 20th, 21st. I have a feeling this is going to be an exciting year for us. And if you miss it, that's your fault. I'm in my mind. And I'd like to also mention on June the 10th, our Shakespeare presentation. Danielle has been involved with that and that shows that we are starting to use our parks in a very productive way. And the first one will be on June the 10th at the Nature Park. And that should be a great event. I noticed that the weather has turned off a little hot lately. And as I listened several months ago to the governor of the state of Utah, he designated seventeen communities as drought tolerant. And that means that we still need to conserve water and use it wisely because there may be a day when we wish we had water, but my suggestion would be to use that wisely. I noticed this past week that the grass on the east side up Washington Boulevard has been cut by the golf course. Was that probably your group, John, that went ahead and did that?
No, we have the Weaver County inmates come through and do that. We have actually both sides. Well, not for us, but they need somewhere to go. We always sit in there. We have got some in the tanks anywhere else, so that's what we need to talk for.
Well, it looks nice anyway. And they did a good job. If you want to go back to town, they did a good job. And that's a well-used project for our inmates to go ahead. The other item that I had was, I got an email from a resident mentioning speeding around forty-four hundred south on Washington Boulevard and eighty-nine. And where I live, I've heard the billy bikes going, I guess they go from eight fifty all the way up to the mouth of the canyon. Is, do we have any jurisdiction of that or how do we handle something like that when, in a speeding of eighty-nine? I talked to a retired highway patrolman and he thought it would probably be in the city's jurisdiction, but I asked him if the highway patrol would go by and make a, come by and visit those areas. And he says, sometimes they do and sometimes they don't. But, that was a comment that I had from my email. And the report I know writes, last time we talked about the lights, traffic lights on eight fifty and ten fifty. I didn't know if we were able to talk to the, we talked to Department of Transportation on those, but that's all I have.
Okay. Thank you. Councilor Howard?
I think everyone's made great comments, so I'm going to pass.
Councilor Howe?
Just real quick, I wanted to thank some of our staff, chief park and your officers responding to some pretty gruesome scenes lately. Appreciate that. It's never a fun job in our fire department that also responds. Speaking of that same incident, John, thank you for answering the email professionally and, sorry, talking to her about that. Everybody kind of probably already knows what I'm talking about, but thank our staff. And then Danielle, thanks for getting South Ogden Days going. You're a freaking rock star. And the Shakespeare Festival, I'm so glad you're on our team. That's all I have.
Amen. Thank you. Mr. Dixon?
Thanks, man. I'll keep it short. Skate park. So last fall, when John and I were out there and that was, it was at the ribbon cutting, after the ribbon cutting, and we were looking at the landscaping and the contractor that did all the work was the one that when he, before he left the site, he had mentioned to John and I, hey, I think you need to really be thinking about putting a sealant down to get into the cracks on all this. When the owners of Spawn Ranch and the design team were here, John and I said, hey, do you guys have a recommendation on who we use or how they apply this? And they said, you do not apply sealant on these skate parks. They said, this concrete is meant to roll and to be smoother. He said, it almost makes it too slick. And, and they were like, almost offended that we even asked because they're like, no, you don't, you don't put anything on this. So John and I looked like, said, okay, we will take your word for that. We're not going to, we're not going to do it. So we should be having, though, I guess it'll be this fall, anyway, the warranty period, at some point we'll have a walkthrough. And it seems to be holding up well. I mean, I don't spend a lot of time up there, but I haven't had people complaining like, hey, there's a crack or a buckle and sing. But we do, we will do a year warranty walkthrough and do a punch list if there are things that still, that need to be fixed or repaired. So that's a good question. Jurisdiction on Highway eighty-nine, chief, correct me if I'm wrong, yes, our department and yes, highway patrol. Like, it's police officers or officers of the state and are sworn to, they can write tickets anywhere in the state. They don't because they don't want to have to drive to South Jordan to go to court. But jurisdictionally, that could be our folks and highway patrol. UDOT Lights, I did reach out to, well, the mayor offered to reach out to UDOT. And when I called UDOT to find out who he should call and talk to, she answered all my questions. So I was like, hey, mayor, you don't need to call them. The bottom line is, UDOT has changed due to safety requirements and accident counts that any corridor that stayed owned where the speed limit is fifty-five or more, they will not re-allow what's called a permissive yellow arrow.
Oh, okay.
So they said, we're sorry. However, she did offer and agree to say, we can look at the timing and the timing sensors to be sure that it's not stuck or it's, she goes-
Been in too long?
Yeah. So there are some things they will do, but as far as getting a yellow, that's most likely not going to happen. And I noticed one, because I use eighty-nine up in the north end in Harrisville quite a bit. And I was sitting there and it was Sunday and I'm going, there is nothing. Why am I sitting in this? And then I realized, I looked up and there was a speed limit sign fifty-five. And I'm like, okay.
Yeah.
I get it. So I do know it's frustrating, but they just have data to support that people that are allowed to make those permissives, they just can't judge the speed of that oncoming traffic well enough at fifty-five. So it's dangerous. So that will not change, but they'll look at it as far as timing.
We need to be more patient, is what you're saying.
Leave ten minutes earlier. No, I'm kidding. Mayor, that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. I know quite a bit. So last Thursday, Mr. Dixon led an arbinger training with some of our, people from every department in the city came to do a leadership training. And I sat in for the first little bit before I had to go and it was excellent. Appreciate department heads for sending some of your people to that. And then I left there because I went to Salt Lake to the UTA Experience at the UTA Depot there. A lot of good information about what they've done, what their future is. Talked about, they do follow the multifamily housing builds to see if they need to reevaluate routes. And I made sure that they knew where ours were. And I did get to drive a bus, so that was cool. It was electric bus, quiet as can be. So I'm thinking to me on my retirement jobs, but that was pretty fun. In the hall just around the corner here, there's some new art. The palette club is up, the correct one. Yeah, we're asked to do scenes around or in South Ogden. And there's some excellent new paintings, so make sure you check that out. And there's a viewer's choice. You can vote for your favorites. And so that's kind of cool. Thanks, Danielle, for doing that. Met with Mr. Dixon, Summer, John, Juliana about Little League football. And we determined that we will still do Jets this year. We've had some residents sign up. So we will have a team or two. And that deadline's not passed yet, so it could be more, a lot of people at the last minute. And then Juliana also put together with our input a survey to send to all those that have been involved in years past to see what they would like to see happen going forward. And so this could be the last year of Jets football, but it might not be. So we're going to see how that plays out. But in our determination of what's best for our South Ogden youth right now, especially those that have signed up, is to make sure we still run WFFL Jets football for at least this upcoming year. And then we'll look at the survey data and see how that goes. But that was a very productive meeting. They're very realistic about how things are going. Have some great ideas of what to do for our rec program. This Saturday's the D. Smith Memorial 5K kicks off South Ogden Days, so be involved with that if you can, if you feel like running, or you can just go volunteer your time. And then the South Ogden Days activities are coming up as well. Chris Carwash on Thirty-seventh Street, the owner Jeff called me. It's been exacerbated by all the people have to come to Thirty-seventh, but chief, you and John, if you want to drive there someday, he says a lot of, a lot of the young Subaru employees are parking on the street, which isn't illegal, but they encroach on the entryways and by the corner and it's really difficult as people pull out. So if we could just look, see people parked illegally, see if we need to paint a little more red up from Ridlet Road or on the approaches, but just take a look at that and analyze that and see what we can do. I, we were going to call Subaru and encourage them. They got, they own from Subaru to In-N-Out Burger. They probably could find a place for their employees to park off the street, but they don't have to. It's not illegal, but if we could look at that.
And I have talked to their general manager and he, he reminds them staff every day.
Okay.
Like, he's like, he's like, I've become the parking police. He goes, it's terrible because I'd rather be encouraging and complimenting my guys than I'm out there patrolling. But he is sending the message and trying to be a good neighbor and they want to be good neighbors. And at the same time, it is a public street, so it's hard to-
So that's that balance. But yeah, if people leave the car wash and that other entrance, sort of by Macy's as you leave there on the Thirty-seventh, there's just cars you have to pull halfway out to even see what's going on. So just a little safety issue there. If we could evaluate that, that would be great. And I believe that is all I have written down.
Mayor, you always get the last word, so I'm really nervous to jump in here.
Go ahead.
But I failed to report on one of the coolest meetings I went to since our last meeting. Mayor Porter had a retirement gathering at Bonneville High School after thirty years?
Thirty-one.
Thirty-one years of being an educator.
Thank you.
No easy job, but it was neat.
Retired.
It was cool.
Previa-
You should have saw some of the pictures. You should have saw some of the pictures they had on display.
Pretty fun.
That's the reason he has less hair.
Back when I was younger, of course. No, guys, I'm lazy. No. I worked in my yard. I had to just hurry and shower and run down here. And I, same thing yesterday. So, no, I got stuff in mind to do. I have not retired. I do hers too. So, thank you.
Yeah, thanks, man.
That won't hit me till August when everybody goes back to school and I don't, because right now it just feels like a usual summer of driver's ed. Well, I'm not working, but I'm helping get the class going still and transitioning away from that and working in the yard and maybe some golf and lots of this job here. So it's good, good times. Thank you. So we'll excuse the rest of you. We'll officially recess in this closed executive session, but every now and then, most things are done in public, but every now and then council mayor have to meet in a closed session to discuss the character of professional competence or physical or mental health of an individual. And so we will move into that. There will be nothing else after that other than that we will reconvene and adjourn. So you don't worry, you won't miss anything. But we will invite all of you to leave after we recess into closed executive session. So you entertain a motion that we do recess into a closed executive session.
So moved.
Thank you. All in favor?
Hi.
Awesome. Thanks, everybody, for coming. Department heads, visitors, appreciate you being here.